Yeah. It's a new variant will come around.
Yeah. Okay, it's been six o'clock. Open the meeting of the Enfield Board of Selectment. Before we begin, we have a full agenda tonight, so I'm going to ask everyone to keep your remarks, comments succinct to the point and as brief as possible. With that, approval of the minutes is of the October 18th meeting is on the first thing on the agenda. I'm in approval.
I'll second that. It looks good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair managers report or board reports first, sorry.
At a budget committee meeting. Last week, I thought it went very smoothly, very productive. Essentially focusing on the DPW. I thought Jim did an excellent job presenting it. And you know, the big discussion, of course, had to do not with equipment, but with raises. And so that's still an ongoing discussion. It's an ongoing process. But I did assure them that the Board of Selectmen felt pretty positive about those. That's about it.
I was not able to attend Planning Board, so but you're going to be hearing about Master Planning.
Okay.
There are some prices that are going up totally out of our control, anything related to oil, fuel. There you go, from paving to diesel fuel.
And that should be kept in mind as other things on the budget are planned.
Yep.
We had a heritage meeting last Thursday. We are moving forward with an application to a New Hampshire Preservation Alliance for Planning Grant. Bring a meet with Nicole Flynn, who's the field representative. She took over for Andrew Pushing when he left. It's essentially the job that Andrew did. And she will help us decide at what level we will apply for this planning grant. Lakeside Park will meet tomorrow. The good news there is that we have received a permit by notification to proceed with the repair of the old railroad tri-wall, which should be rebuilt in the month of November. And Steve Patton is working on his schedule to get the brand built for access from the rail trail into the park. So he's working on his whole early winter schedule right now. But we have received permission from New Hampshire DOT to go ahead with that as well. Now, managers before, at least it did jack leave anything? No, we did not. Okay. Then we will move into the business of the evening. David Frye.
Okay, I'm here wearing my Planning Board and Master Plans Task Force hats. And I'm here to report on the activities of the Master Planning Task Force. As you probably know, our consultant came on board the first week of October. She has been working with us diligently at our meetings. We have, or she is finalizing a community-wide survey, which will be available online very shortly, possibly as early as this this week or next. There will be a print version for those people who are desirous of taking the survey by print. And there will be three or four places around town where people can return the survey in a lock ballot box type of operation. We figure the survey will take people about 15 to 20 minutes. And Lindsay, who will probably be joining the meeting later, has a personal goal of 2,000 responses. So she's working on that. She's been promised a dinner by one of the Planning Board or Task Force members and myself. So that's going nicely. Over the last four weeks or five weeks, we have had a series of four educational sessions. They were hybrid. I would say the average attendance was probably somewhere in the 20 plus or minus five range. We had a good turnout for the first one, which was myself delivering an overview of the master planning process. We then had a really good session on housing, a session on zoning, which Rob Taylor left. Not left, led. And then we wrapped it up with a really good discussion on economic development. What it means, what it means to the town and how it might be accomplished. Our big public event is coming up this weekend. I see, John, you have black and white versions of the posters in front of you. There's colored ones. We have three sessions scheduled. They will all be identical. The first one is Saturday morning from nine to 11:30 at the Community Building. The second one is Saturday afternoon from 2:30 to 5:00, also at the Community Building. And the final one will be a virtual version online on Sunday from 5:00 to 7:30, which kind of fits right between various sports events that are on television. So we tried to accommodate as many people as possible. The events will allow for visioning. Will allow people to tell us what they like about Enfield. And more in particular, where they would like to see Enfield 20 years down the road. In the course of our educational events, we've heard a lot of what I can only characterize as very strange rumors, like we are going to widen Lockhaven Road. We are going to build 500 apartment units. I mean, stuff that's just totally out to lunch. And more significantly, which the neither the Task Force nor the Planning Board have any power to accomplish. All we do, all we are doing is taking data, taking input, comments from the public, compiling them and spitting it back out. That's all we're going to be doing. So my my main reason for being here, and I will get out of here and let you continue, is to issue a essentially personal invitation to the Select Board members. It would be nice if you could divide up between the three of you so that we have one Select Board member at each of the three events. But you know, whatever suits your schedule, we would be very, very happy to have you attend to voice your opinion either as citizens or as Select Board members. And I think it'll be a really good opportunity for the Select Board to to hear what's on people's minds. So that having been said, I will leave some more copies. You can
Thank you.
Put them up on your refrigerators, bulletin boards at your home office, whatever. And we hope to see everybody Saturday or Sunday. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the presentation.
You're very welcome.
Kurt Bachhau of Data on Streaming.
What I'm proposing is the town start providing a on-demand video service. And so that the residents of Enfield have greater access to see what's being discussed and proposed at the different town boards. So like room is like David was talking about, don't even start because there was no, or you can go back and say, where did you ever see that? Wasn't discussed. And currently, the only way to know what's being discussed at these different town boards is by reading the minutes of the meetings. And when they
Or attending.
Right, right. But when the minutes become available, they tend to be heavily edited depending on who's doing the recording, the secretary, recording secretary, and the preference of that board.
Well, I I get that you differ with you there, Kurt. I do the minutes for the Heritage Commission and they are not edited.
I'm not, I'm not in the single, single board.
Okay.
But I read the different board minutes and and there's some more complete than others. Some are one line, some are full paragraphs, some are full pages. And so it's all over the place. And 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 as you said, the only other way is to either attend in person or by Zoom, currently by Zoom. And if you have a busy work schedule, you're unable to attend because of your work commitments, your home commitments. They're just pretty much out of luck unless you have able to watch it on Comcast Channel 8 when it's provided. And I don't have Comcast. It's not on my street, so I don't even know what their schedule is, how often it's provided there. It's I reviewed several different options for services that could be contracted. And all the ones that I found, of the probably five to 10 or so that I looked at, the one I found that has the best service for the best price is a company called Town Hall Streams. And they emailed me a basic proposal with the type of service that they provide.
We have it in our pocket.
Okay, do you have a copy of?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And it's worked out to be $3,000, $3,000 per year for their service. The meetings will be live streams when they're being conducted. And then it will go to their website, which is has easy links to them and becomes available 24/7 for up to five years for anybody to view after the facts.
Were you going to work with Angus DeRosa on this?
I emailed him a couple of times and he was pushing for a YouTube process. And when I went to town board, government boards on YouTube, what you saw was a typical YouTube channel with all the ads on the side and limited limited quality of the video. It all depends on what went up there and how well it was shown. And but just, and you had to go to those towns specifically for that meeting. And like I said, the ads could be anywhere from monster trucks to Vegematics on the side. And this is free for a reason. And my understanding is to upload it. It's more more work required from whoever's doing it from the town.
But it doesn't cost $3,000 a year.
No, but you're getting what you pay for.
Well, I I use YouTube all the time. I find it very useful.
Well, for things, I'm not saying it's not useful. I'm saying for, my argument is for a town board, for town governments, I don't think it's, you know, the place to be putting your town meetings.
I have a question. I assume this would imply that we have a cameraman operator for all these meetings, no?
No.
So how does it get recorded?
They install, they install at their cost, a camera that's wall-mounted, a ceiling-mounted, audio, and that's it.
So we're good as long as all the meetings are held, let us say, in this room?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, right, that's that's, I'm assuming this is where would, most of the meetings seem to be held. This is where it would be installed.
I have a question. Would that obviate the necessity of having recording secretaries on all these commissions?
I doubt it.
You would still need to have a recording secretary to do minutes.
Yeah. So then who is going to turn the minutes in and what's the situation with regard to their justification? Of what's on screening and what's on the paper?
What's on paper, I think, takes precedence because those are the legal minutes.
Okay, alright.
And that's why statute of state.
And I think it's really important to have those because often if you're listening to a vote, it's hard occasionally to hear for whatever reason. And so having the official record of the votes and the motions in particular are what we need.
So I just have a question.
Could you identify yourself?
My name is Matt Young. I'm part of the Rec Commission. I'm also, live up on Lockhaven. This meeting is being recorded.
Hmm, no.
It says recording in the top left corner. That's
It is being recorded.
So what happens to those recordings?
Well, we keep them at the moment until for most of the meetings, until the minutes are completed. So they're just for backup for preparation of the minutes.
Is there any way, and this may not be an answerable question right now, to upload a link to the video of these meetings?
We don't actually, we would have to have a place to put them.
Got it.
We can't have the link onto our servers, which is where we store them temporarily.
In the past, I had suggested OneDrive as a as a possibility too, but I think YouTube is probably more practical.
As it stands now, though, we have a town, town Zoom account and we have the owl. And so we have the capability of recording these meetings. It really comes down to where can they be linked to or via what server? Okay, that was my question.
Where is it going to go? How's it going to get there? That's it?
Just have a point of order. With each time I post the information that these meetings, these meetings are available on Channel 8, I also say, if you'd like me to, I will move them to Facebook.
Good point, thank you.
I don't hear from anybody about that.
But you put it out there.
How these things aren't recorded and there's no access to them.
Right.
Call me. I got all the copies.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
Um, no, I I've asked and I haven't seen it, so it's that's a separate issue. Well, if I was being recorded, I mean, that's what this company does. It's, it's, everything is done. You turn the switch. The camera starts rolling, meeting's done, you turn the switch off, goes directly to its live stream while the meeting is happening on their websites. And then it immediately becomes available for on-demand service for anybody that wants to watch it. And the video, depending on where the camera, where the cameras plays to start the room, whatnot. But the overall video for most of the meetings I've seen have been quite good. This company has 50-plus towns that they do. It's a New Hampshire-based company. A lot heavily New England, but other other states contract with this service and use them. It's, it's the most simplest one I found where everything's right there, real easy to find. As far as the cost goes, currently, the town has been receiving for the last six years between $57,000 to $58,000 from Comcast as the franchise fee. That is an unrestricted fee. It's the town, according by the FCC rules, can use that money for anything. It's just a general fee that the town can charge.
Jim is shaking his head. Do you want to comment on that, Jim?
Trying to figure out which fee he's talking about. I mean, is that
Comcast fee that they pay to the town for being able to provide Comcast in Enfield?
The franchise fee.
We're going to have to talk to Dan about that because I know there's some confusion about what that money means and what its distribution rights are. But I think there'd be better to talk to the CEO of the Enfield Channel or CTO to get that correct information.
Question. So if it's live streaming, does it allow the interaction like what we have on Zoom or we still have to do Zoom? Because live streaming is only just showing people where they are. It's not allowing them to interact like what we have.
Like you're watching a TV program.
Okay, yeah, there's no, it's a one, it's a one-way kind of, okay.
Correct. Yes, this service is quickly a one-way service.
Okay.
One way and then on-demand live playback. And well, everything I found, reading the Comcast contract with the town, the most recent one, 2018, I believe is the date. I have a copy in there. And the FCC rules state that the town can charge up to 5%, it's currently charging 4% to Comcast to provide cable service to the town. And it's unrestricted funds as to how that money can be spent.
Well, I would like to have again Kylie's comment on that before we assume that there's a $58,000 pile of money floating around out there.
It's in the town report. It belongs in the town report.
We currently get about that much money. Half of it goes to the cable channel now. Right.
Well, yeah, over the last six years, it averaged $25.5,000 has been provided to Enfield Channel 8.
Right. And the rest goes into the general fund.
Correct.
Okay. And you do have a question? Yes, is that Angus that has the question?
Yeah, hi. I I'm still a little baffled at why we need all this over. If the goal, the goal as I understood it is to get on-demand video recordings of the meetings, recordings that we're already making. The only step that's missing is taking the recording of the of the meeting and putting it somewhere that's accessible to the public. That can happen easily and has happened easily with the COVID vaccination meetings that we put on just uploading it to YouTube. There, if there's issues with YouTube, there are other services that also do this, but either free or for a nominal fee. We're already recording. We're, if we're continuing to Zoom, there's no reason. And I never heard back from you. You emailed me and I tried to explain this to you in in the email that I sent back to you. We have all the pieces except for storage. There are free storage solutions, including YouTube. And because YouTube is so commonly used, I think it would be the lowest barrier to entry for people to be able to view the meetings.
And free.
And free. And and I'm happy to train anyone to to do it. I'm happy to, I'm not here all the time, but I'd be happy to come and upload the videos myself because I think it's an important public service and I hopefully would encourage more people to be involved in in-town governance. But I just don't get, especially if the money is unencumbered and could be used for anything else. I don't get why we'd want to pay a bunch of money to have a third system running for every meeting in addition to Zoom and Owl. Just that would further complicate things and be sources of potential failure for for getting what we want to get done, which is essentially already happening.
Great. So Angus, I have a little bit of a break from CIP meetings in November, so I have a couple of different boards that I have to attend. So maybe we can work on it in, well, in the next couple of weeks. Or in December, if you and I can work together to see what we can do with the Select Board meetings.
I I would love to, really, I'd make time for it.
So do the Select Board meetings sort of a test case?
Might as well, yeah.
Alright, that makes sense to me. It's always good to do a test of something.
Okay, and thank you for your help and thank you for looking into this.
I mean, you keep saying $3,000 is too much money.
No, I haven't said that. What I've said is that if we can get something for free, I think that's a preferable way to go. And also, everybody's familiar with YouTube.
Okay, I'm just a little baffled.
Well, what do my fellows
Well, when you're willing to pay $25,000 plus to Enfield Channel 8 and only a small portion of the town.
Well, that decision was made a long time ago.
Well.
When the Channel 8 was first established, Jim.
The reason we get that money from Comcast is
Is because you have the channel.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that is just wrong.
Okay, let's not get into arguments here.
I think it makes sense to do a test case, see if that works, see how it goes. Because we learn with Zoom the same way, right? I mean, this is all they learn, Kurt. And so anytime we can not have replication and equipment and or, I mean, I have some concerns in general in life about the number of ports that are in this world. Just from a safety perspective, right? So adding more equipment and we do have a number, we do have another owl downtown. And we do have other meetings that happen. So if the test case worked, that would give us more than one location with an owl. And I think that is desirable to have more more availability. So see if it works and see how it goes. We'll start there.
Okay, the journey of a thousand miles.
Thank you very much, Kurt.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, the Recreation Commission, Recreation Department proposal.
So for this, I get to take off my Minutetaker hat and I get to step into my role with the Recreation Commission. I am the Recreation Chair. We have five members. It is a newly created commission that you all just voted in.
Really newly revived, isn't it?
Yep, that's exactly what I was starting with, is that we really just kind of gathered ourselves together here just in April. And within a very short period of time, we all recognized that there were some pieces that needed some work, needed some tweaking, needed improvement. And we, as a group, have met with both of the department heads. Ed Winters is no longer with us, but we have been meeting with him ever since we began as a commission.
He was the tower week, the director.
Yep, yep. And so we have done all of this work with his input, with his support kind of all along, as well as with Bridgette LeSri. So to kind of cut it short, our proposal is to present as a full-time recreation director, both with respect to the fact that we have so many resources in Enfield, making sure that those resources are both utilized and well taken care of. And that's everything from, you know, being able to connect parents and and adults and the varying ages that we have in our community with all of the different opportunities that we that we have. And that also includes all of the the various kinds of sports and activities and all of these offshoot clubs that are
I believe the Massoma Valley Youth Sports League was run independently.
Yes, no, I'm not, yes, it is, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
While we have a lot of great arguments for what a full-time rec director can do, the main thing to focus on, especially at the moment, is the combination of two roles that are currently two very part-time positions that are making do, to say the least. But it would be the combination of the current rec director position and the Massoma Valley Regional Parks Rec Program.
But that's where I have an issue because I believe that when, for several years, Katie Jopek was the Massoma Valley Rec Director and Enfield paid X amount and Canaan paid X amount. And then last year, just before Ryan left, Mike Samson and Canaan said he didn't want to be part of that anymore. So how is this Massoma Valley when it's just really Enfield that's picking up the tab?
So it is going to be Enfield. It's not going to be the Massoma Valley anymore. It's going to be Enfield.
Just plain old And to offset that, which we have just been currently this year paying it.
To offset that, we are proposing potentially, after the rec director takes a look at it and sees what our finances look like, potentially doing a non-resident fee for programming in Enfield.
Just like at CCB and
Just like in any of the area towns. There are
I would propose you do it as a resident discount, right?
That's actually not a bad approach.
So that you, it's friendly because that's been the complaint right along of other towns. And I think the thing is that we are subsidizing operating costs upfront. And so our residents are entitled, in my opinion, to discount, which is different than charging a higher fee.
Sure.
So I know it's semantics, but at the end of the day.
When we first reconvened, if you will, or rejuvenated this commission, we took a look at the state of things. And one of the things that became very evident very quickly was, for lack of a better term, the disarray in which programs were run. There was not a straight answer on who ran what program, where the profits or revenue went, who was paying for said programs. This will allow one person to dedicate the time and energy to unifying these programs, clarifying them, following up with potential delinquent accounts, researching grants, which is not something that was in the time capacity of those two part-time positions. And there are grants available. It will also allow us to then expand our programming. No, we're not talking about Massoma Youth Sports League right now. We're talking about camps. We're talking about all age range programming that goes on currently. We're talking about camps, we're talking about, um, all age range programming that goes on currently and more programming that could occur. We're talking about facility.
You use the word camps, that would mean in addition to the summer camp program, you might offer, for instance, school vacation.
Uh, it, it could be that. Again, that's kind of a decision we leave up to that director position. But we are definitely talking about with the consulting from Ed on this topic of camps was the expansion of the summer camp. They overproduced for revenue last summer by cutting it and they ended August sixth. And, uh, I work for a facility that runs a summer camp and we went all the way until almost August eighteen.
Yeah, I, I also work at Ava and they go almost to the end of August.
This is also, sorry. It, this also speaks to the needs of residents, though. We have parents that were in our town and their kids go to our schools. But then, uh, having this available for parents during the summer is absolutely very important. As a parent myself, I understand how difficult it is to get childcare during the summer months when they're on a school. So, I mean, it's just one of those extra things to
There's, you're, you're always gonna talk about budget, you're always gonna talk about money in, money out. What is the revenue producing part of this? Yes, we can expand programming and we can get better about and more diligent with the revenue that's currently coming in. There's also, uh, a quantifiable but more difficult to quantify ancillary revenue associated with having a strong rec department in a town. It will attract younger families. It has side effects that are ripple effect that touches every part of the town, including small businesses. If we can start running a comprehensive rec program here that doesn't always necessarily include the facilitation of programming by the rec department as much as the informational transference. Because right now, the person to my left can attest that people will call the police department to find out information about things that we don't necessarily facilitate, but that do occur in this town. And this is another purpose of that, is to have the physical person present to answer the questions, to direct people to that programming that will attract people into this town on a temporary or permanent basis that will produce revenue in this town.
What are you going to do for older citizens?
Increase the programming we already have existing. I believe we have
Well, it's gotta be beyond, uh, uh, chair yoga and
Right.
Whatever other.
But we need to connect with those citizens to see what, what the ideal programming would be that would be successful to offer. And that's where having a key point person and a representative of the town and to be connecting them with the community in that way is absolutely vital. Um, but also, I mean, we've gotten feedback from the town offices and even myself working in the, the building next door, receiving calls and questions and trying to get information. When you don't have a physical person there is very, very difficult.
You said more than char, charity yoga, right?
Right.
Twenty hours a week combined between these two separate organizations, which makes communication difficult, has produced what you see. More hours, one person focused on this effort will inevitably expand programming across the board.
What about, I, I would like to see comparisons where other towns of forty-six hundred people, under five thousand. Do they have a full-time rec director? And if so, what is the, what is the salary range? And what do they do?
Sure, we did look into a little bit of that. I don't have those references, resources in front of me. But we did look into that when trying to formulate a salary range for this. We looked at comparable towns with comparable programming. What we have found is that pretty unanimously, it's one rec department running this type of programming, not three uh, or three organizations. And that that range of, that we proposed of fifty thousand dollars a year really falls into actually the lower end of what is typical for a town of this size in this area as well. That's important to note is that obviously different demographics, different areas of the country are gonna have different pay rates, but within
I'm talking, let's say, the greater New Hampshire.
And that's where we look.
I'm not talking about California.
And that's, yes, that's the information that we did receive.
Yes, ma'am, I was gonna offer to answer some questions about the programs being offered beyond the knowledge. But also, yeah, I, you know, I guess I just wanted to attest for the fact that being one person with limited time available, I, I feel the, uh, and somebody who cares about our town and the vitality and really wanting people to love living here, it's really hard to have such a limited time. And I think that a lot of programs could grow under something like this. Um, you know, I, I'd offer a lot of things. So you just mentioned camps, Meredith, and I just wanted to clarify too, you know, things aren't youth sports. There's a basketball camp, there's a soccer camp, there's a volleyball camp. That's all stuff that I do and that Katie was doing and I continued. You know.
There was a theater camp, a very successful.
And, yep, and there was theater camp again this year. Um, so those are all things that, you know, I think I, I would want to hope to see continue for sure. But, you know, what more could be offered? And it, it's really hard. I mean, I, I also coached the volleyball camp and I have for years, so I had to wear, you know, a couple of different hats this year. But it's just one of those things that I think to see more offered would be great. Um, and as far as a resident discount versus not, I just was gonna point out that the Enfield rec camp does currently have a resident fee versus a non-resident. So residents do get a discount currently. Um, but I think that more programs could see something similar because there will be the overhead cost to the town of Enfield. And that will help to cover things like insurance and a rec director's pay.
Are you saying that this would be a self-supporting position?
Are you asking me or them?
Everybody.
If we had all of the information that we would like to, we would be able to give you a much more direct answer. Um, but part of what we have run into is that having a quarter of it here, two quarters of it here, and then a little piece of it that's not really sure where it falls has that, that itself has been kind of, um, a, a little bit of a discrepancy for us to really feel like we can have that, that absolute picture of X, Y, and Z. However, what we do know and understand of the programs that we currently have and even that we can kind of really roll out here as we are kind of entering this, this phase out of COVID. Um, or at least starting to, like, we're starting to see some of these glimpses and pieces that we can really start putting back into place. That's, that's where we're seeing where the, a big value add would be.
I see, um, another side benefits to our larger staff, and that is that this role would probably do some of the scheduling and question answering. So like, I'm sure in the town office, you answer the phone and somebody goes bing, 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 until they find, you know, how do I schedule this? How do I do this? And, you know, who's scheduling the park? Can you even, can you even reserve it, right? Those answers can be consolidated and give people back a little piece of their schedule.
Well, and that, and that goes, I mean, you know, there were multiple facets that even I could think of. Um, you know, whether it was the scheduling, which I know our assistant town manager currently can't or there's also the maintenance factor of, you know, having someone who physically goes down. You know, I know that we have DPW for these things, but, you know, at the same time, having an extra set of eyes that, that actually reports to DPW would be even better and in even more greater value to
DPW doesn't pick up trash. And they shouldn't be expected to. And we, we have a pack it in, pack it out policy.
Well, I think, I don't think we all feel the same way about that because I strongly disagree because I feel that people are throwing trash down anyways and then residents complain. So that happened recently. But we could be using some of our personnel lines that are not being used to hire it. Um, so I don't think we all agree on that.
But I think that having I, like, you, you have a physical person that would have eyes on all of these sites. And maybe it would be a part of their agenda to be doing a site visit every other week or, you know, things like that that give you that extra piece.
Site visits to where? I mean, I would like to see a little more specifics.
So Shaker Recreation Parks, making sure that everything is up to par with where it should be, making sure that any equipment that is there should be there or should be put away, anything like that, taking care of, helping take care of those buildings. Making recommendations as to how we can have that more accessible or, or have it, uh, maintained. Lakeview Park, um, you know, we have a gorgeous new park, uh, having a physical representative down there to walk through and you know, call Jim or, or call another representative with, with a concern or a thought. I mean, that's, uh, pretty
Well, the Lakeside Park Committee is doing that pretty well right now.
I don't consider a committee volunteer role to be a sustainable way to do something in the long run, though. I think you do need to assign it to a key person despite the very good intents. And it's, every committee works this way. At the end of the day, slowly as people change and they age out or they decide they're gonna retire, which we don't always let people retire nicely around here. You know, there, you have to have somebody who has ownership of that task, even if it's just checking with the committee to be like, hey, how's it going? What do you have for me? Right? So you have a person who is on your staff, who, that, that reporting point goes back to.
We need to look at where we're going. We need to see what's coming as COVID does subside. And that more group gatherings are gonna happen, more recreational programming is going to occur. Having it split between two or three different organizations is not effective. It wasn't effective pre-COVID. It's not effective right now. We asked questions like, how many pieces of equipment are there? And we couldn't get a straight answer because people didn't know. It's the organization of what we currently have. And then once we've got that settled, once we've brought things under the same roof and we have accountability for these programs, then we can talk about the development that will potentially move us towards a net neutral type state.
But I still like to see calls with other towns like Enfield, five thousand or less. Oh, and how would you, uh, weave into this? The, the library has a lot of programs, for instance, that they run independently. It comes under the umbrella of the library. It's been going on just fine. And, and then there are a lot of programs that happen at the, the Enfield Shaker Museum. Granted, it's a, um, non-private nonprofit, but those programs are open to everybody.
Right. And we're not talking about facilitation of those programs. We're talking about being, if you're talking about things that are outside of the realm or the facilitation of the Enfield Rec Department, then we're talking about one of the roles of that director being that point of information for anybody who wants to know about those programs.
Supportive role to exactly those things and helping
Where are the trails around here?
Other sailing club, for instance, has, has runs, uh, youth sailing program.
The, the
They do all the teaching. It's just facilitated through the rec program.
Exactly. And it's, and it's, we're not administering these things. We are, that is one role of that position is to be an informational hub.
Okay.
And it's like the skate circle, the skating circle. If somebody wanted to know about that, uh, one thing that I find is people will call rec departments to find out what happens in that town for rec programming.
And Bridget has taken it upon herself to do that activity for us, actually publish out into the other towns for different activities. So it's not just Enfield. Um, so even though we might be largely serving an Enfield role, getting that news out into the community to draw people in because we are the larger town in the Massoma area. Um, same thing goes back to scheduling, Massoma Youth Sports, even though you're not, not running, we're not running it as an organization. The amount of field scheduling and things like that all falls back onto our people. So, you know, recognizing our tie-ins is very, very important. And I think things like that soccer camp, I don't know if everybody knows, we don't run the soccer camp, but we take in revenue for that. We actually, you know, so I think there's a lot of opportunities to run some of those where you do just the tie-in and you don't lose a lot of it in a straight of hours. You've provided a field and you're taking revenue. And so maybe it doesn't start off as revenue positive because ever, there's an uptake on everything, right? Every organization that starts a new business takes a little bit. But I think we have an opportunity here to take in some revenue at the end of the day.
Okay, so you want us to be thinking about this?
This is, this is the, this is the proposal that we will also be giving to the budget committee, uh, because this was a part of the proposed budget. You know, we worked with the town, the interim town manager, um, along the way, kind of with our ideas and processing all the pieces and then bringing it all together. Uh, so we're bringing it forward to you as a kind of an informational item because this is what was brought forward in the budget as well and will be presenting to the budget committee.
I'd like to see, air regardless of whether it becomes full-time or not. I, I, and this is no disrespect or, um, lack of interest in what the two folks did and these two separate roles. But these were made because we were told that we needed to have two separate. And I'm a big believer that you should never make a position for a person. And I feel that we made a position for a person because they wanted to do ten hours. And in doing so, we divided two things that should not have been divided. We should have left them at twenty hours. It for that, right? Because it just made it more complicated. And so we added an extra layer of complication. But what we really probably needed was to look at expanding the role. And if somebody couldn't do the full, then we needed to look at why.
You're also talking about an era when the funding for that position wasn't coming solely from Enfield, right, where it is now. We also have a great opportunity here. As much as I, I'm gonna miss Ed because he did a fantastic job. That role's empty now. So if there's going to be a time to enact something like this, it would be when you have a position empty and you reorganize and you restructure how you approach recreational programming in this town. And you don't wait to fill that position again and address this a year from now and have to say to somebody, I'm sorry, but you no longer have a job with us.
Can I just finish, um, that both Ed and I both support the full-time or unified position. Um, I know Ed stated it in our meetings prior, the rec commission meetings, um, and I think he said it again. So, and I honestly, a lot of those things, Meredith, as you said, you know, the sailing, the sailing club does stuff and that was gone. It went through Katie. It would be something that I would do. So I feel like all of these services that Katie was providing and that I'm trying to continue providing are already happening and being paid for. And Enfield has already said, we're comfortable with this amount of money going into recreation. So this would be the question of, let's expand that so that we can give more to our community and expand. You know, again, the people that are coming out, it, as Matt said, it, it goes out to our businesses, our residents. It helps people move in, all stuff that we're looking for.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well put.
Review of withdrawals from the Capital Reserve Fund in preparation for the November fifteenth public hearing. So we're gonna have to have a public hearing to withdraw funds from Capital Reserve. Some things have already been voted and what's require a separate vote. So I just thought I'd give you a list of what we're looking at at the moment. It's not fully up to date yet. Um, the list is, the second column, you'll see everything's numbered numerically. Items one through nine are existing debt service and already approved to come from the fund. Uh, we have some other things that are approved to come from the fund, number ten, which is the fire rescue plumber. But we're not gonna see a payment until twenty twenty-two, so we're not looking for
Thank you, everyone.
Same as for the ten, we are number, number eleven. We won't have anything until twenty twenty-two. The DPW improvements, as you may know, are kind of put on hold. Um, so we're not asking for any funds uh, specifically for the entire grouping that was authorized by town meeting to borrow. And if we took out the loan, we would have been looking at money, paying something in twenty twenty-two. However, because there were three parts to that, um, it makes things a little more complicated. We only, we've gotten so far one part done and that's the exhaust system and the highway base. So we'd be looking at maybe just doing a cash withdrawal of the seven thousand and fifty-two dollars and sixty cents for that. CIP committee is supportive of that. And then the insulation would happen as a separate piece with we. Jim is actually talking about doing something different besides the overhang and just putting the money towards shoring up and repairing the wall and doing some grading to get water from the building, measures like that. Because the price for the extension is just skyrocketing. So so looking at doing things a little bit differently. We still have the authority to borrow one hundred twenty-nine, five eighty-four. But, uh, obviously we wouldn't borrow that full amount. We would back out what, you know, was already taken out for like the exhaust system. Um, number fourteen is the cruiser and we have a loan for that. The first payment will be in twenty twenty-two. We're looking at closing on the, uh, the loan on the DPW F three fifty in a couple of weeks because they're gonna get the truck. We just have a little bit of outfitting to get that done before the end of the year, but that won't have a payment until twenty twenty-two. Number sixteen is gas tank replacement. That's on hold. However, Jim would like to propose giving a computer system upgrade because right now they're using a clipboard and that system is not working. The old computer system is DOS-based and has been problematic for some time, but he does not have a DOR amount for me. If he doesn't get it soon, then that'll have to wait till next year. Steamer replacement was on Steam replacement was on the list of CIP items for this year, and that has been purchased, so that will you did vote on that in twenty twenty-one? Let's see. Yeah, the next one is the Oak Hill Road Bridge. When the, we opened a loan, never took any money out and closed it. Because the Oak Hill Road Bridge came in at uh like two hundred and fifty, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So I think that Jim is looking to do the sidewalk improvements by DPW primarily and maybe going back for more money for the Oak Hill Road project because we already have a hundred and fifty thousand authorized to borrow. We would just have to raise the other one hundred and thirty thousand to borrow. Just get additional authorization. So that'll, that'll come up, you know, maybe for ten. If everything falls into place.
I talked to the engineer on that and they tried every which way to Sunday too, to see if they could offset and subsidize it with some of our own labor. And it wasn't feasible.
Um, number twenty, I'm just, I just have that as a placeholder. It kind of was an older item. I don't know if we have, I have to double check the budget to see if we have any expenses for the facility planning. That would include any expensive, extra expenses that we have for publications for Whitney Hall presentations, things like that. It may not be done in time to get it into this vote for this year, so it might have to carry over to next year. Number twenty-one is our employee and retiree, retiree benefits trust fund amount um through. Let's see, what was the date that I did this? It's only through the date that I, we had, October twenty-sixth. I'll wait for this one. That already is authorized by town meeting to have the funds and we don't need a vote from the selectmen. So it's gonna be something north of that. I'll just get the most current figure before I send it to the trustees. The air packs will need a vote because it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars over what was on the list, and it wasn't actually voted to begin with. It was just on the approved list in the spring. Um, Mascoma Lakeside Park Trust Fund, I want to wait till the last minute for that to kind of get the all the grant money and it kind of check everything back and forth to see if we need to withdraw anything or not. I'm thinking we probably don't have to. And Old Home Days, uh, we take our revenues and then we take our expenses from that and whatever the difference is. They didn't have any revenues this year, but I don't think they did any fundraising. So we just have a vote to withdraw uh from that. And that is what we're looking at for the next meeting.
Close Personnel Policy Updates, that's on the education.
Yeah, these are both items that would affect the budget, um, both of the proposed policy updates. So one, don't have to make a decision tonight. I did bring it back as you looked at these um education piece at the last meeting. The longevity pay was something that was discussed between uh Jack, Jim and myself and Roy. And so I can tell you that the proposed policy would be that five hundred dollars longevity pay for people who are five to nine years of service. Currently, um, we have six people who qualify, so that would be a cost of three thousand dollars. Two years uh in twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-four, it would go up if we have the same staff to forty-five hundred dollars because there would be three more people who'd fall by. And that's as far as I can look at this point. So you can, you don't have to make a decision tonight if you want to think about it. However, we should have some kind of a decision on this before the budget is finalized in December.
What you're, what you're feeling about this?
I'm fine with it. I think it makes, it's a way of being competitive. That's not a huge, and it's not a huge dollar amount.
I agree.
Shall we take a vote on it?
I'll make a motion that we uh approve the updates to the personnel policy as presented together with the longevity pay item and the advanced education proposal. Was that? It's like Sorry.
Okay, all in favor, roll poll vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you for putting this together. I know it's not always that easy. It may only be three pieces of paper, but I know how much time it takes.
Uh, board committee membership volunteer assignment.
Okay, so CIP Committee is down one, maybe two people. And so they still have five, which is workable, but you know, there's vacancies. And it did come out to the last CIP Committee meeting that, once upon a time, there was a select board member. And that went away, just the town manager did it. And you want to have a select board member on it or not, it's it's voluntary. You don't have to be there. But um, because we are expecting another resignation, if somebody would like to represent, be a representative, that's fine. Jack and I currently go to all those meetings.
I think that's why we stopped. I I did it when I first. And it certainly was interesting. I am shot on bandwidth and I just took another project. Because I wasn't busy enough, so I took another forty hours projects for me.
And and they were clamoring to have somebody, but they wanted to put it out there that, you know, you'll have her up and if you would like to serve, they'd be happy to have somebody.
Conservation Commission applicants.
Okay, um, you received, there was an application from Susan Brown for Conservation Commission, which was sent because you always want the board input. It was sent to the Conservation Commission to uh come up with a recommendation, which they have done so, and that's in your pocket. So you can, you decide whether you want to accept the recommendation and go that way or.
It was my understanding that it was a unanimous decision by the Conservation Commission not to accept.
I believe, I believe that's true.
The application of Susan Brown, and I would support that decision.
Yeah, I think we have to support the decision of the commission, uh, the Conservation Commission. Otherwise, you what's the point?
So and they will, they will provide the feedback, I assume.
Um, I'm sure that they could do that, though we can ask each other and you'll see.
Uh, Dr. Dyce, would you like to comment on this?
Or we can, because it was your decision to do that.
Oh, right. You're, you're continuing to look.
Basically made our recommendation, and I understand it's this the board of selectmen's uh responsibility. You can either accept that or reject it.
And we have just accepted it, so I guess we're good.
Okay, so but we're, you're down, but you are down at least one member.
They are down one member.
And we have uh put an application or a notice out for that particular slot to be filled.
Well, good luck.
Um, then there was the Enfield Village Association. I guess there was, you know, there have been select board members on that.
And I resigned from the Eva Board uh as the select board representative, so it's open.
It's a, it's, I have it on my list as an optional
Right, yeah.
position, so it's up to you, but it it was kind of brought up, so we threw it on here.
I've been helping them with social media, so I can certainly, I I continue to do that anyways.
So do you want to do that unofficially or officially?
I can do it officially. It doesn't really, um, yeah.
Okay, I'll put you down as the
They have a new, they have a new very competent social media marketing person. So now I'm just kind of being like, do they remember to give this to you? It's just often, no, we're working on it. So I I would be happy to be that tie-in piece and in with them. Unless you wouldn't do it. You're all set.
I'm all set.
Okay, I'll, I will do it.
I'm having a pretty busy year.
I know, I accidentally took a job this morning.
Oh.
Another one.
Donation to
The Old Home Base Committee.
Oh, sorry.
That you were interested in serving on that committee.
Yes, that's right.
If the selectmen, you want to be a member of the committee as opposed to the selectman's rep or just the
I'll be the selectman's rep.
There we go.
And if you're okay with that, then that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, the donation to the Masoma Lakeside Park, two thousand dollars. Do we need to vote to accept that, Elisa?
Yes.
I move with that. The sum of two thousand dollars for the Masoma Lakeside Park Trust Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Donation. Donation to the Enfield Fire Department uh for dry suits, uh, one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
I make a motion, we accept that with thanks.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Donation to, I love these donations. We work right through them. Donation to the Masoma Valley Parks and Rec Ski Program. Now, there's that Masoma Valley Parks and Rec as opposed to Enfield.
Well, this, this was a regional program that is now, not really.
Right.
This particular uh grant would actually, it's it's more of a grant than a donation.
This is from
It would actually pay for skis as well as scholarships for students who could not uh take part in the ski program.
Yeah, and in this case, it makes a lot of sense because that physical location for that program is traditionally been at in an elementary because of their fields and their access, which is very, Enfield just does not have a place that's uh now, if you were to change it to be an all Enfield program, you'd have to just explore a new location.
No, it's just that it is, it is a bit of an identity crisis.
Oh, absolutely. I think every one of us agrees and and for Bridget is constantly navigating.
Welcome to my life, Meredith.
She, Bridget's written out to her incorrectly.
I will eagerly accept the donation.
I'll, I'll make a second on that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Administrative.
Okay, we have a completely optional uh New Hampshire Association of Assessing Officials election ballot. Julie gets one of these as well as a member, and if you would like to vote.
I'm, I'm kind of with Jonathan. I think, uh, so my thing is, there's not, there's like not a lot of choice. And I'm not saying, I just, I feel like, I mean, I, we could write someone, but is there really a point? I don't feel like I would, I guess I would feel more comfortable not voting. I don't know how you guys feel.
I don't know any of me.
Right, I looked them up and I was like, I mean, it's not like there's an election or any.
We, we know Norm Renee, Chris McAllister also.
Yeah, Norm's on there, but I'm saying like, there's no one running against anyone. There's no one objectionable. And so unless you guys have an objection to someone, I kind of
I think that's a good plan.
Okay, do we have to vote on it?
No, you don't. You can just pass over it.
Okay, and we're down to public comments, and there's not really a lot of public here.
There's public thing.
This is a very tough letter to the, the, the about the alleged violation from the Department of Environmental Services.
Well, I'm glad you're on the board.
Yes.
I didn't even know there was that much vegetation there.
Well, if you look at it, I saw, I was kind of curious. I looked at a Google map on one side, on the Lebanon side of that property. There's some bushes and and grubs in that area, more so than on the other side of the property, so.
Yeah, I just was saying, I thought, I mean, given the fact that I've seen people wandering around Tom Coppery's chairs, I thought, oh, you might not want me to pick it.
I make a motion, we turn. Is that okay?
I'll second that.
Yeah, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
There were no public comments.
Nobody had their hand up.
Wow.